Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the township board commissioners meeting this January 25th, 2023. We'll begin with the parties we should provide.
Parties we provide in the United States of America. The two of our publicists is one nation under God, individual, whatever it is, justice.
Hey, call this meeting to order for the roll call. Mr. Saraceni here. Mr. Marsette.
Here.
Mr. Cummins.
Here.
Mr. McManaman. Here. Mr. Saunders. Here. Mr. Warwick.
Here.
Mr. Willard. Here. Mr. Malasaika.
Here.
Mr. Dole. Here. Roll call's done. Before we get, before we get into meeting, I take a minute to recognize one of our Ridley's finest that passed away January 15th. Carmen Zizzi, he's 88 years old and a lot of people around your department for a lot, a lot of years, owner operator of Carmen Zizzi's son. He was a graduate of Ridley High School, class 1953, where he played football and held the national record for plant for touchdowns for many years. He was a member of Christ Church in Ridley Park, where he served on the property committee chairman and as an usher. He was also a member of Ridley Township Business Association, served as a plumbing inspector for Ridley Township for many years, and was inducted into Ridley Township Old Timers Hall of Fame. Carmen was a, out of the golfer, but mostly he was known around town to help a lot of people and definitely a great plumbing inspector for many years with us. He could be stubborn at times, like, like a lot of them, but Carmen was a very good man and we'll miss him tremendously. Our condolences go to the family and the prayers. So if we can have just a moment of silence, we appreciate it. Thank you. Okay, first of all, is there any other public word? Okay, thank you. We have a resolution presentation for Leilana Felicity. I'm going to try to announce this while I, Mr. McManaman do it. This is how we want to come up. The whole family want to come up? I'm sorry, I didn't get your name correct. As we, Mr. McManaman was practicing. Okay, we have a resolution tonight. Um, get a little closer. Councilor.
We're just starting.
Yeah, let's come over. I'm always. Okay, township of Ridley resolution. Whereas Leilana Felici Valdez Azinski, a resident of C Kane section of Ridley Township, was crowned Miss Filipinos 2022 by the Filipino Executive Council of Greater Philadelphia on June 18th, 2022. And whereas Leilana attended Amisland Elementary School and is currently a junior at Ridley High School, where she takes advanced classes and participates in cross-country track, indoor track, mock trial, mini-thons, and rights legacy. And whereas Leilana's platform project during her reign will be to collect and ship clothes, food, toiletries, and household items to Filipinos overseas who are living in poverty. And whereas Leilana is and will continue to be a proud representative of Philippine cul- culture publicly and various events during her year-long reign. Now therefore being resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Ridley Township of Ridley thus hereby acknowledge and salute Leilana on her coronation and on behalf of the citizens of the Township of Ridley, the Board expresses its sincere congratulations on this astounding achievement. Being further resolved that the resolution be recorded in the office minutes of the Township of Ridley and then a copy of the res- resolution will be presented to Leilana, adopt that this 25th day of January 2023, Township of Ridley Board of Commissioners, Joe Ryan, manager, Bob Willard, president. Congratulations. I've known Leilana when she was a little girl and she came up, she played Kedron, and she's turned out to be a great person. It's always nice to see these young children develop and, and come up and do a lot of things. And I know she's going to do a lot of great things and I want to just thank her family.
Thank you.
Yes, great parents and congratulations. And before the meeting, she goes, "I don't have to say anything?" Congratulations. Congratulations, that's very nice. Just so we don't have you guys waiting the whole meeting, I'll just get down to it. On these, uh, we're gonna skip ahead a little bit. On December 31st, Corporal Doyle was proactively monitoring traffic on Swatmore Avenue with Fossum. He conducted a traffic stop on a vehicle, failed to stop at a posted stop sign, the operator was trying to have an active warrant and possessed narcotics. In lieu of charges, Corporal Doyle was able to get the subject placed in treatment facility through the law enforcement treatment initiative, which is a program that's been adopted on Delaware County District Attorney's Office. The law enforcement treatment initiative is a program that allows individuals seeking treatment for addiction to use local law enforcement as a resource to contact participating treatment partners without the threat of arrest. Under the LETI, the individuals can contact a member of law enforcement at any time to answer a referral or to be connected to treatment with no threat of arrest or prosecution. Since the program's inception, members of Ridley Township Police Department through Corporal Doyle's lead and example have entered multiple individuals into the program, with several participants now completing treatment and starting new beginnings. The Ridley Township Police Department and the Ridley Township Commissioners are very proud to be on the forefront working with alter- alternative resources to combat drugs, drug dependency disorders. So I want to congratulate them and I know there's a district attorney's here today and Brian's here, so I don't know exactly if you want to say a couple words, does Brian want to come up? I guess you want to say something.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, as you know, I'm shy. I just wanted to echo everything you just said, Mr. President. We can't thank the Ridley Police Department enough for their embrace of the Letty program. This is a tool that we have adopted to give law enforcement another avenue, another way of helping people in our community who are suffering from substance abuse disorder. Corporal Doyle is the poster child of this program. He is a superhero. He has been advocating for this all across Delaware County to all the officers who serve our public so well. We also have another officer here in Ridley who we'd like to honor, Gary Marchenek, who on December 7th found somebody, came upon someone who was overdosing. He then gave MVP recovery, the heads up, took that person first to the hospital to make sure that they were okay, and then he entered that person into the treatment program. So we've got multiple heroes here in Ridley Township Police Department, one of the finest police departments under a tremendous leader, Captain Dougherty back there, who's been doing fabulous work. And if you don't mind, Mr. President, I just want to say a word about MVP recovery because this is one of the crown jewels of Delaware County. This organization led by Brian Corson, who is standing here with me, are the best recovery house operation service provider in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. So we are darn lucky to have them here. They are homegrown talent. They have been going around under a contract with the county to make sure every police department, every law enforcement officer is aware of the program. And he's been doing, and they have been doing, just tremendous work. So I want to thank you for the embrace of the program, Mr. President, and for everything all of you are doing, particularly from the Ridley Police Department, for everything you are doing to make sure that people get the help they need and don't end up incarcerated in the system meaninglessly. So thank you very much. And Brian, I don't know if you want to add something?
I think you said something about Brian, I know I've been hearing you deal with it for many years, like, seems like 10 years at least.
Yeah, we're coming nine and a half years, exactly. Yep, absolutely. So no, I just.
Congratulations, you, you guys do great work.
I really appreciate that. I want to thank you, Mr. Ryan, it's great to see you, sir, Mr. Willard, and having us here, and thank the district attorney for letting us participate in this. And I wanted to personally thank Corporal Leo, who's been working with our Letty coordinator, Phil Wable, and he's, he's just gone above and beyond for promoting this program. His dedication and commitment of helping those in recovery and helping people engage recovery, and for Ridley Township and the Board of Commissioners to really back this, that's what this Letty program is needed. We really have needed that proof of concept that it works. I have cards here, we are 24/7. If an individual needs treatment and law enforcement encounters them, we can get them into treatment in real time on the spot. And we appreciate all you guys' support in getting that word out, and we're here for that. And I just want to thank you for having us here tonight, and thank you for being a part of this. We really appreciate it.
Right, thank you for all your work. Thank you very much. Okay, we need a motion to approve the resolution.
Oh, second.
Motion made in second, any questions on the motion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Reapproval of previous meeting minutes, October 26th, 2022, November 16th, 2022, November 21st, 2022, and November 29th, 2022.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Motion made in second, any questions on the motion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Managers report. We got the 2023 appointments. We have a list of German hearing board, yeah, Frank Hagan, Michael Reagan, German hearing board alternate, William Sprague, William Boyer, Thomas Henry, all planning commission, Rick Saraceni, CDCA representative, Joe Coromos, Civil Service Commission, Michael Reagan, Recreation Board, Susan Brown, Edna Fury, and Michelle Carpen, all library board, and Jackie Smith, Board of Health. We want to congratulate them and thank you for all their hard work to the committees. Mr. Ryan, you have a question?
Yes. Uh, the first thing, Mr. President, we have a resolution we need. It's the emergency operations plan update. We have motion to approve a resolution updating our emergency operations plan, Tack Commissioner Warwick, and update some of the fire department personnel into the plan.
Make a motion. Motion made in second, any questions on the motion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
I need another motion to authorize disposal of items through our municipal. We are continuing our efforts to dispose of obsolete vehicles and equipment through the municipal site. This time around, we're looking for approval to dispose of some public works equipment, including a 2001 sanitation truck, a leaf collector unit, damaged stove lamps, and other miscellaneous truck parts. A motion is needed to authorize this.
I'll second. Motion made in second. Any questions on the motion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Just as a point on that, we've been very successful with municipal, getting rid of all the equipment that's been sitting around, the old police cars, now some highway equipment, and it brings funds back into the general fund. The last thing I have is a motion to ratify a backhoe purchase. We're purchasing a 2023 backhoe that was authorized in the 2023 approved budget.
Motion made in second, any questions on the motion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
That's all I have, Mr. President, thank you.
Thank you. Recycler report, just a little second.
Trash collected in December was 1,049.8 tons. Recycling kept in December was 239.86 tons. We collected eight TVs and monitors in December through our television monitor recycling program. More information on our program is available on the township website, www.ridleytownship.org.
Thank you. Controller's report.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Assistant report, Mr. Neil.
Mr. President on the front.
Engineer's report, quick to tag it.
Thanks, Mr. President. First off, I have certificates for approval, AU service for the 2022 sanitary storm sewer contract, $13,588.58. McMahon Associates for the Arlie grant, $736,025. And Traffic Planning Design Incorporated for the McDay Boulevard improvements, $688.75.
I'll make the answer, I'll second.
Motion made in second, any questions on the motion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
We have one extra approval for consideration, it's RVN Enterprises, McDay Boulevard and Kedron Avenue, in the amount of $513,824.
Motion made in second, any questions on the motion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
A series of resolutions, I'll do it as one group if there's any change. So the first one is the PA DCNR and all field grant professional services, this is authorizing our office to prepare the big documents for that project. Second resolution is that DCNR, the Ridley area Little League Development Project, this is, this is permission to file an application with DCNR for some, for some improvements down there. A resolution for the Green Light Go Grant, this is authorizing the application for the upgrade of four traffic signals at Academy Avenue and Kedron Avenue, Academy Avenue and South Avenue, South Avenue and Franklin Avenue, and Morton Avenue, Michigan Avenue. And finally, a resolution for the 2023 Camiade for the street resurfacing.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Motion made in second, any questions on the motion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
The PennDOT Stormwater Permit, the Wawa and Dayton Bulwans Lane. This is basically authorizing the developers consultant to file an application with PennDOT for the maintenance of the storm sewer system that's going to be installed as part of the Wawa project. PennDOT policy basically says that the township is responsible for them, for that maintenance, and they need to file this permit with, with the state. Obviously, we're not going to maintain a system that was put in by the developer, so as part of the, the development agreement, as part of the construction, we would delegate that responsibility to the developer or its successor. So we need a, a resolution to, or to allow them to file that application.
Make the motion.
I'll second.
Motion made in second, any questions on the motion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Amherst Avenue Sanitary Sewer Relining, we had some problems down on Amherst Avenue, the video inspection was done of the sanitary sewer. It looked like the line needed to be relined, so we received four quotes for the lining of the sanitary sewer pipe. The low bidder was Swark Incorporated, in the amount of $14,700. I would look for authorization to proceed with that project.
Motion made in second, any questions on the motion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
The next two projects are really just information. First one is Aqua Project. Aqua has provided information that they're going to start a water main replacement project on Swatmore Avenue from Morton Avenue to like Seventh Avenue, and also on Dartmouth Drive. That work's set to start next week and continue for several months. There will be some traffic restrictions on Swatmore Avenue during the working hours. And finally, the Pennvest project status. The contract, contractor Nick Avanesio resumed work on the Academy Avenue, Armstrong Avenue piece, we expect them to be done within 30 days, and then we'll be able to clean up that project. That's all I have.
Thank you. Highway sanitation committee report, Mr. Warwick.
Thank you, Mr. President. Residents are reminded that there will be no trash collection on Monday, February 20th, in observance of President's Day.
Thank you. Law and ordinance committee reporters, Ted Dolly.
Thank you, Mr. President. I will refer to our township manager, Mr. President Ryan, please. Thank you, Mr. Fedali. The first ordinance is number 2071, it's just an update to our traffic regulations. It's motions requested to adopt ordinance 2071, which updates various traffic regulations throughout the township, such as stop signs and no parking signs that have been added.
Make a motion.
Make a motion.
Motion made in second, any questions on the motion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
I'll refer the other two to Mr. Neil.
Thank you, Mr. Ryan. Mr. President, we have an ordinance number 2072 before the court tonight dealing with amending the general code of the township, chapter 225, rental dwelling units, specifically section 225, that's two. We're amending definitions for dwelling unit and family and adding definitions for tourist house, roomy house. I'm also removing from section 225.3 subsection C3, which dealt with certificates of use, turnover fees for inspections made within three months of annual inspection, that's what we're removing. So we would need a motion from the court to adopt or deny this ordinance.
A second. Motion made in second, any questions on the motion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Next, we have ordinance number 2073 dealing with amending general code of the township of Ridley, chapter 253, solid waste article six, recycling, specifically section 253.35 definition, by adding definitions for person, institutional establishment, commercial establishment, municipal establishment, and community activities and events, and also adding provision to section 253.37, which deals with separation and collection, by adding subsection D, which would state regulations pertaining to commercial, institutional, industrial, municipal establishments of Ridley Township shall also apply to community activities and advances defined in this chapter. We need a motion to adopt or deny the ordinance.
I'll second.
Motion made in second, any questions on the motion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Recreation committee report, Mr. McManaman.
Thank you, Mr. President. We are still accepting registrations for spring basketball league. The league is open for boys and girls, grade six through 10. It will be capped at 90 players, so register early to ensure a spot. There is still time to register for the Red Cross babysitting course, spring class, craft classes, and session two of Zoom Google. Online registration is open for all our programs. Visit our website at www.ridleytwp.org under Parks and Recreation, and click the section for online registration. Just a note that this is a new online registration program, so a new username and password must be created. For detailed information on all our programs, visit our website and our Ridley Township Recreation Facebook page. Thank you.
Thank you. Public safety committee report, for the month of December, our police handled 996 calls. The breakdown is as follows, Crumlin 74, Fossum 264, Holmes 111, Mumba Park 44, Morton 42, Ridley Park 108, C Kane 75, Swatmore 34, and Woodhead 243. So another busy month for our police department. Healthcare department, care department, Mr. Saraceni.
Thank you, Mr. President. For the month of December, we had 158 permits issued, 12 contractors registered, 24 certificate, certificates of occupancy issued, 20 rental inspections, and 14 health inspections. That's all.
Thank you. Notary committee report, Mr. Saunders.
Noted tonight, Mr. President.
Library and research center committee report, Mr. Cummins.
Thank you, Mr. President. More than 300 dresses have been collected for the library's second annual prom dress giveaway, which will be held on February 4th from 5 to 7, and February 5th from 10 to 2, to provide new and gently used dresses and accessories for this year's formal and prom giveaways. All items will be free. Thank you for everyone who has donated dresses and accessories so far. Donations can be brought to the library during our open hours through Thursday, February 7th. Trustees are running a date night gift basket raffle to benefit the library. The basket includes gift cards for dinner and movie, plus chocolates, scratch tickets, and more. Tickets are a dollar each or six for five. Drawings will be held February 14th. 61,149 people visited the library last year and checked out 152,172 books and other items. Program attendance last year was 24,338, 75% increase over 2021, and the highest it's been in at least seven years. Programs continue to be offered at the library, off-site daycare centers in other locations, online through Zoom. For more information or to register for programs and activities, visit our website at www.ridleylibrary.org. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Finance committee report, Mr. Marsette.
Thank you, Mr. President. All commissioners received a list of this month's bills, and I would like to make a motion for approval subject to the controllers' review at the Capitol.
Motion made in second, any questions on the motion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. We all have new business, first word, Mr. Saraceni.
Nothing tonight.
Second word. I'm going to mix up, make sure you guys are waiting. Paying attention. You're the night. Third word. Fourth word, Mr. McManaman.
Nothing tonight.
Fifth word, sorry.
Nothing tonight.
Sixth word.
Nothing tonight.
I'll wait till the end. Most second. Ninth word.
Nothing again.
I just have a couple things, one, I want to thank, I see Bob Bowers is here, and Dean, Chris Holt, who quit making tonight, I want to thank you guys both for giving me a praise of, pride of some things happening down at Derby Park, and Bob made a call, a couple of things that the police can come down and handle the situation, but it's good to have a couple citizens and keep in contact with us and help keep the neighborhoods clean, and, and that's what we need, communication between everybody, and Chris Holt, all that called David Barnes and different things like that, things on all the neighborhoods. Very important to have the citizens, we've got the commissioners, and have that relationship where we all care about our communities and keep in touch. I want to thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Anything else?
No words.
No emails. Much to do, Jerry?